Uh, we'll call. If we stand, say the Pledge of Allegiance. Clark, I can lead it. Yes, that's a good voice.
I'd be just to the flag. Maybe I'm going to take something. And free public, which is saying. One needs under government indivisal with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Katie, um, you have a microphone. It's a toughie. That's official over here. Very much. We will go through to start the public hearing, just to just let everybody know. Public hearing tonight, you'll be able to make comments, ask questions during the public hearing. Specific for that, Jesse, would you care to state your hearing?
Certainly, a statement of public hearing is the purpose of this hearing is for public review and comment regarding amendments to Title II. Administration and personnel of the Village of Grafton Municipal Code as it relates to boards, committees, and commissions.
Very good.
Absolutely. Um, what we have, um, just kind of an overview of this, uh, project that staff undertook following last spring's appointment process. Really was a, a notice that we had ordinances that established various boards, committees, and commissions for the village scattered throughout the code. Um, that being said, they were, um, um, created over time in different formats with, um, different, uh, um, purpose statements with different appointment processes with different, uh, uh, membership. Um, information set forth, and that being said, we looked to create a one place within the code. Um, to list out the various boards, committees, and commissions. There are a couple of exceptions to that. Couple of statutory, uh, empowered, uh, committees being the public, uh, excuse me. The Planning Commission and the Community Development Authority. Um, that said, the other boards, committees, and commissions are set forth in this new section. Um, some of the most significant changes include updating the membership roster for the, um, Finance Committee in that it is currently four trustees. It would be, um, uh, three trustees and two citizen members. Um, also too, instead of just finance, it would be known as become known as a finance and personnel committee whereby anything human resources related or personnel related would go to this committee. That responsibility is actually set forth in code, but it is a sentence buried within the confines of the committee description. So by updating the title, it really clarifies the role of the Finance Committee to become the Finance and Personnel Committee. Also looking to add citizen members, um, to, uh, Public Safety Committee, Board of Public Works. Looking to, uh, increase citizen engagement in the recommendation process to the Village Board as policymakers. Um, and it actually, um, looks to clarify and, um, make consistent the appointment processes in that the Village President does make appointments throughout this code, and they are subject to confirmation by the Village Board, including chairpersons. Um, that does, uh, exclude the Police and Fire Commission as they are a quasi-independent, uh, body of the Village Board, therefore they would elect their own chair. Um, that is a brief overview of the, um, ordinance update.
Perfect, and also leave the library. But.
Yes, correct. In accord with their own bylaws. Yes, sir.
So was there any, uh, comment from the public? During this proposed, uh, proposed ordinance change? Yes, uh, please come over and make everybody come to the microphone because God, we have a hard comments. Please state your name or address.
Marie McFall, eleven oh four Sunset Court, Grafton. In regards to the, um, proposed amendments to the ordinance. Um, I respectfully ask that a formal consideration or implementation. Uh, we consider for any policy or procedure to solicit citizens, their applications, the interview process for these citizen volunteers, and the final selection of those citizens. And, um, that's it.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions, but looking for a formal policy.
Thank you. Please come to the microphone.
Phil Harbeck, nine oh seven seventeenth Avenue in Grafton. Uh, just one question relating to the zoning board of appeals proposed, uh, amendments, and that's in section two point zero one zero point zero one zero four sub G. It's the variance. Um, provision. I'm a member of the zoning board of appeals, and there's something in there that maybe I've never looked at the ordinance before, but it says, and we consider variances homeowners come in, businesses come in, seeking a variance to the building codes and requirements. Um, and set things like setbacks and things like that. Um, this now states that for a variance to be granted under, uh, under our procedures. Sub B says the hardship that the applicant has to demonstrate is due to adoption of the floodplain ordinance and unique property conditions not common to adjacent lots or premises. And it lists several others, but these are not or or this is and. We've never dealt with a floodplain ordinance before, you know, it's getting setbacks, it's things like that. So I don't know if that's a vestige from an old ordinance that somehow got in here, or if it's language that got overlooked. We, we don't typically deal with floodplain ordinances. We can't, but that's not one of the things that it's happening.
I, I do know. Change as we request. On since regarding floodplain. It's changing.
Correct, but if we can't impact, um, our section related to boards and committee sufficiency. So I, I'll let. Also, but this is a oversight.
Um, it was. Um, it was, eh, actually, it was an addition into the code because it covers all of the potential possible variances that, um, the, uh, zoning board of appeals could, um, actually, uh, adjudicate. So it actually was an addition to, um, the different types of, uh, variances that could be reviewed. So we're just trying to cover all bases.
We have the. That the hardship is due to adoption of the floodplain ordinance. We have to find that. And that's not what we so far in my tenure have ever done, nor do we understand it to be our chart. Might come up if you're dealing with floodplain issue, but that's the only time it's not standard for the other, uh, pieces of the various.
Please go on.
The problem is they all say. You know, it's G one, two, three, and it ends with and. So it, it makes it all four of those have to be met the way it's ordered.
Okay.
I mean, an or would take care of it because then you've got. That's my comment. But what you will, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? Twice. Okay, we'll close the hearing at this point in time. Thank you all. We'll go to our next, uh, our next year is the approval of the February maintenance twenty twenty four report minutes. And file the January seventeenth twenty twenty four art integration board. January twenty second joint library board. January twenty three, twenty twenty four plan commission meeting as presented. I'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second. Any questions? additions? suggestions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Mm, varies. No, to bet, uh, first things, wish the question to be heard about an agenda or an agenda, maybe. As this is a business meeting. Take time to stir in, uh, the discussion of agenda items. However, if you'd like to make a comment at this point in time, you're more than welcome. Okay. Anyone but it hurts. The item number six. This is by the president. Appointment of a military chair to the architecture review board. And appointment of Robert Jacobson to the board to review. All of these were due to folks recommending or moving the area. I do understand that trustee Harbeck has a concern about addresses, you see. Applications. You like to speak to that?
Sure, um, I called man earlier. Um, Jeff, my only concern was, um, I understand of this. For some reason, it's not being released to the public. I don't really understand why. Um, but if I find that in my job as an offensive official, I would just like to know the address of somebody who's applying for a spot on a committee. Um, I'm happy to get that in my email. I don't know that it necessarily has to be on the application, although I, I don't really agree that it shouldn't be on the application. Um, so I had sent you an email earlier and asked you if I could just get these two addresses.
Yes, and I had been in and out of my office most of the day, so I apologize for missing that email. That being said, I handled these applications to put them into the packet. All of my past practice has been to redact personal information until such point these individuals were to be appointed. Right now, they're residents. By putting a full application out, again, this is my practice. I put these in the packet um, on behalf of the Village President. Up until the point they're appointed, these are residents, and this gets a published packet. That would be all of their personal contact information published. And if, if, let's say, for instance, for whatever reason, uh, one of them is not appointed this evening or confirmed this evening for appointment, that's their personal information published and they're resident. So my practice has always been until such time they're appointed or as an elected official, then contact information could be provided or published, but that is why it is redacted in the packet this evening.
So again, I'm just gonna say. All kinds of private. This is not anything that I requested to be released to the public. I would ask that it just be released to me personally, so I know that they're a resident. I don't think that's out of the ordinary. And for somebody who's asking to be on a committee, I think it is important that there is transparency. Um, so unfortunately, I, I can't see that they're a resident. I mean, I see that it says Grafton. I see this, but it's, but it's redacted. So because of that information tonight, I'm not going to be able to hold for these committee members.
Okay.
Because I can't see the information, and I would ask that you reconsider for those of us trustees to just get it in our email.
Okay, as I mentioned, I would be happy to provide that information. However, I was asked for it and I was not in my office most of the day, so I missed the email. That being said, once appointed, I am happy to provide the full applications to the board. But for purposes of publication, I did not.
This information, this information came. Yeah, you're going to want that. Please get that to Jesse. Business over for it's not fair for Jesse to get us. I don't know Jesse when you got this.
I don't even know.
Yeah. That would be fair, so that you're not disappointed. He has the second thing I'm pointing to before I go to the, um, just the general consensus. Would having a not having an address, given the fact that I've verified where they live. Also, the clerk has verified that they're a resident. Uh, would that, would that be a problem in you voting in appointment?
Not for me, wouldn't be a problem.
For me.
No, but I'd like to know how you know and we don't.
Because I precedent and because I get the, uh, I get the applications. So, um, I bet them, I move forward. So. No, okay, and yes for you. Yes, and yes. Okay, yes, yes. Okay, so generally, it's just this, it's an issue. We have a question. So I will look here for a vote on Mr. Grabcheck for the, um, for the board. Motion in a second. Move to a group. Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed.
Aye.
Okay, that's two days.
And please, please know why.
Mm-hmm, right. We have that, trustee Harbeck and trustee. Trustee Miller, no. Appointment of Robert Jacobson to the board of review. Need a motion second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both.
Aye.
Okay.
For reasons stated.
Okay, you have that? Great. Great, meant to resolution and by the way, both of these. For instance, the resolution ordinance is actually real. Drafted school district representative presentation. Mission, um, great to have you here tonight. For you, Mr. Naught, thank you for coming.
I would like to see the ear, yeah, or can you hear it?
I, you know, I think, um, I want you to just go ahead and present there, speak.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, be told for how we're here.
See you. He just hits slideshow.
Ah, okay.
Awesome. Thanks, Jesse. Yep, so Jeff Nelson, graphic supervisor superintendent. This is my eighth year superintendent. But rather observe the man also in his. Um, our bad line for our reference, together we grow, together we succeed. We've talked about this often. Great communities result in great schools and vice versa. And the just, uh, you know, they're growing, which is a great problem. I'm taking out in my slide figures. It just, do you have a good?
Yep.
Me. I heard it.
Yep. Again. It's now saying it should go. Okay, I will advance for you. Yo. Actually, we have just frozen up. No. There we go.
And there we, all right, thanks. Uh, so we are in our presentation phase. We on our we already had two presentations. We have one at the Village Board tonight, and then you can see the others that we have alliances on I and others coming up. We've, we've sort of presenting to our staff. We've already met John Long, presenting to our staff as well. Right, giving you an overview of where the state of the district is right now. We are ranked fourteenth in the state K twelve districts on the Wisconsin D P I D court cards. So looking at our academic areas. The high school is ranked in the top two percent of Wisconsin high schools. We were recognized for the first time in the top work, workplace recognition with ninety seven percent feature retention rate. Ninety eight percent graduation rate for last year's graduates. Ninety seven percent of our high school graduates have had at least one post technical. And then looking at our financial situation, fully funded five-year tax plan and a fully funded ten-year gap. So if I was to expand this, this district in that path before the two thousand seventeen referendum, you would see that we've been a declining district for a number of years. Coming in twenty twenty one, we started having an uptick in enrollment. And you can see we are anticipating being larger next year. What's driving that enrollment surge is our elementary movement, which is actually the best thing to have because that provides stability as they've been to our middle school and into high school, smaller classes at the high school, bigger classes coming up. And you can see that we are improving and, and larger than we've been at our level during that time. The town has had consistent growth over the last, uh, thirteen years, but the village has really had that exponential growth where two thousand ten, two thousand eighteen, you had nine years of a total of eighty-five permits. These are village housing, single-family homes that are, that will be attending Grafton School District. Not apartments, not attending a different district. And you can see in those two years, you had a total of a hundred combined, and then in one year, there was ninety-five. Last five years has been a lot of growth, and you can see even looking out to twenty-four, twenty-five, where it's all in. That's for next year, and that's, that would be, even though it's, it's dropping, um, it is still a three or four-year combined area, so we continue to see Grafton being a desirable place for people to build and live. And we can look at our tax bill, and, and I was not living in Grafton in two thousand eighteen, but if I look at my tax bill on the trail now, I can see that what I paid last year in my twenty twenty-three tax bill is lower than I paid for the school portion of my taxes in two thousand eighteen. So you can go to this Ozaki County parcel G I S, type in your address, and you click on the school portion of your tax bill, and it will show you that as a comparison for each of the years. The court will talk to you why that is like that. I can improve it. I mentioned earlier, number fourteen, back in fifteen, sixteen, we were fiftieth in the state. So all those still doing well. We are now, um, number fourteen out of three hundred and sixty-three districts in our state for our academic area. Just this past month, we had the state superintendent of schools come and visit. It was career technical and education month, which we have, um, Ben Valdez, one of our seniors in our auto shop, doing some brake calipers, writing, um, in our school store, filling Dr. Underlee, the school store that our business classes run. Um, in the bottom right, you see her with our family consumer science students in their advanced cooking classes. And then the bottom left is the areas where in our, in our high school L N C, um, where we have students that are new apprenticeships or are in our intro to teacher classes, um, that's that teacher pipeline. Ironically, all four of those spaces were, were impacted by the two thousand seventeen, the community supported. So we saw a focus in our career technical education in departments back in two thousand seventeen, and then having the state superintendent for the first time ever come and visit our school system, seeing our students and staff in action. New high school center. We're building a brand new middle school. Where did John Long went and sold. Expanded the two other elementary schools along with. In addition, there were major projects across the district. Uh, a second referendum, one point eight million dollars would have upgraded public facility. Or outdoor and public facilities. Both referendums paid. Couple months later, Jeff and I started with the district board to look at what next steps should be. That summer, a facility advisory committee was formed at, at twenty-nine community members from a cross-section of the community. There were eight meetings, uh, from August to December. Part of that discussion was looking at two thousand sixteen, uh, two thousand sixteen referendum. Looking at what we can learn. District should need to be building regular budget dollars. Not to fall into disrepair, and then go to referendum and ask key voters to take care of. Another piece was that athletic field should not be funded through a referendum. Then we should find another way to do that. And finally, reducing the cost, focusing on a solution that would address the district needs and not necessarily the district's wants. So that facility. Invitation for a two thousand seventeen to eliminate Grafton. Expand to other countries to incorporate those. And replace the maintenance building production kitchen in position. That were at G E S, or replace them. Then finally, of course, we did have maintenance projects on this. There, I brought that in at a cost of under forty million. So this is heading for the referendum. Section two, uh, two sections per grade. Can see the tennis courts that the village had, uh, up on the top left that we worked together with, we go with Hijam on Middle School, so we could create some additional parking for staff. Here you can see the additions, that there was space to bring those students over from Grafton Elementary, and of course, the parking lot. Uh, this is Woodview. It's on the bottom side of the picture, um, that before the referendum. And then you can see the addition, again, building space for the additional students coming over from Grafton Elementary. Then you have the high school for the referendum, and you can also see Grafton Elementary in the background. Grafton High School now with Grafton Elementary eliminated. And you can see the maintenance building, competition gymnasium, and production kitchen that was replaced, but in the high school, as well as expanded areas for tech ed. As we showed in the depth reference earlier, as well as for our highest need special education. Then another, uh, piece of that two thousand seventeen referendum, it did include maintenance projects related to deferred maintenance. Things we hadn't been able to take care of in previous budgets. The difference you'll see in the referendum on the April ballot. It does not include maintenance items related to deferred maintenance. It doesn't have maintenance. Because we have a fully funded capital maintenance plan. That covers all the projects slated to be tackled over the next ten years. You don't need a referendum to take care of our existing bill. After the referendum construction was complete, we had some great new construction spaces. And we had other spaces that didn't look quite as nice. So in the years that followed, we put regular budget dollars, put those resources for bringing all of our spaces up to new construction scene. So here are four elementary classrooms. Two of them were new construction classrooms. The other two upgraded. Nearly indistinguishable from those construction classrooms. Want every student to have a great place to learn. Mention that two thousand seventeen did not have athletics. But the district, following, following the year, nearly one point nine million dollars uh, to help on the dungeons. Beated since the referendum, that includes new grass fields. New turf infield for varsity softball. Stadium, new perimeter fencing, new entryway, new track. Getting back to the, the reference in its ballot. Planning for this began back in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. That first year, we saw increased enrollment after a good ten-year, uh, trend of refining enrollment. We completed capacity study. We explored various building expansion options, right? We ended up, uh, coming up with a final option of moving fifth grade up to John Long Middle School, expanding John Long Middle School to handle those students. We made sure during that process to consult with a design, um, professional, instruction professionals to make sure we had the right solution and we had the right cost that we could put on the ballot question. Make sure we could execute this. How we have a new table. Yeah, so what you see here is you'll see the current John Long setup, and then the blue area, this is the addition, and that is the fifth grade. So here to refer, the board has authorized moving fifth grade more elementary schools, which will allow clearly to three-grade level, three, three sections at each grade. By moving fifth grade to the middle school, you automatically open up three classrooms in each of those buildings. So you're going to bring six classes on average here to the middle school. In the referendum, the question that's being presented on April second, it's to build eight classrooms, because what's happening is when, when two seventeen referendum occurred, no one. We only had three sections at each grade level. Now you're seeing bubbles, so you have more students in a grade level that can fit in, in three sections. Let's say we have eighty-five kids, which we have in some of our, in our grade levels. Well, then you need four classrooms, and, and our elementaries are at capacity to be able to try and meet them. This allows us to always have a flex area that will go in that. So you see the addition that provides a a wing for our fifth graders, and then you see some of these remodeled things. So when we started working with our group, there, you'll see there's eight different design concepts that we looked at. We took a group of our, our current fifth grade teachers, all six of them, as well as some specialists to look at two high-performing districts, one in Muskego, Norway, one in Fox Point, Bayside, who have five-eight buildings. And our, our designer gave us options to consider. This hasn't been finalized yet, so we're using one as an example, as a holding pattern, but all those eight are included in the referendum. It could be accomplished if that's the design that's chosen. Um, but our, our team, our feature team and administrative team felt comfortable. Okay, this is a good starting point. So you can see there are six classrooms that would be assigned in a typical year, and that flex area that I mentioned for that bubble classroom. And then we say eight classrooms. You can see that eight classrooms is broken up into two areas for special ed. As we've come out of the pandemic, we do see more spaces being needed for special ed or interventions that need smaller sizes, so you don't need a, a nine hundred square foot room for three or four or five kids being, being serviced and, and helped, but to break it up into small areas is what that does. There's restrooms that are added in this wing, um, technology data and so forth. You can sort of get in there's lockers that are there. One of the things we'll have to occur as we bring fifth grade over will be expanding our cafeteria. You can see in the upper part up here, this is our current cafeteria, which is three hundred and twenty square feet, and then remodeled area, about nine hundred and ten square feet. We've been to the high school, it provides an opportunity for people to come in, receive food and go back out, much more efficient, as well as more space for our students. Having multiple grade level meetings, or maybe, um, that it gives us opportunities and options for our cafeteria. All the food service and cleaning up with that. Now there are remodeling space options, because we've worked with our itinerary staff, our special education staffs, our interventionists, looking at at John Long, what are areas that could be remodeled as we move forward? So these are areas, whether it's off our L N C, whether it's our current old family consumer science area or a classroom, those are things that are being considered by our design point team and looked at for remodeling that would be in the referendum. The current site plan based off of Hickory, looking down. Um, and then you'll see here with the addition of the, of the expansion for the fifth grade, we'll lose some of these parking spaces. So we're adding more stalls off Hickory, which has been to John Long for any event. Those are the prime spots, so it actually helps. You know, this typically fills up quickly as does up here, and then you end up being on Hickory, so we'll provide more spaces off of Hickory. And there's also a playground being added near that. With us, the project. Be eleven thousand dollars. This would include the eighth passing edition. Remodeling of existing spaces to bring fifth grade. Thousand dollars, this would include the eight classroom addition, remodeling of existing spaces to bring fifth grade up. And then site work related to, of course, the expansion as well as the addition of parking and the playground. The finances, we would borrow one point one four million dollars at an estimated five percent use over ten years. Interest costs be roughly three point nine million dollars. The overall debt levy would not need to increase and this would be paid off at the same time as our current debt, ten years from now. The school portion of tax bills would remain stable. Jeff mentioned earlier how you can look at your tax bill and see if the school portion of your tax bill is lower today than it was five years ago. Talk a little bit about that and those reasons are the same reasons why we can go, if we can finance this construction project without losing the same portion of tax bill. And that is, over the past couple of years, uh, the board has implemented strategies to maximize our state aid. Most of our revenue comes from the revenue limit, which has two sources of revenue, state aid, property taxes. More state aid we get, then the the more downward pressure there is on property. And you can see with implementing restructuring of our debt payments and the timing of our expenses every other year. We've been able to increase our state aid by about four million dollars, which again has put downward pressure on. In addition, what we've seen with all the growth in the village is that all these new properties coming online, of course, help share the tax burden. So some of the tax burden from existing properties shift over to the new construction. Uh, that, along with the strategies that the district has implemented, are why we can finance this project. Without increasing the school portion of the tax bill. So on April second, we vote, if this passes, we will begin construction next year during two thousand twenty four, twenty five. Students will then be able to move into the new spaces for the two thousand twenty five, twenty six school year. If it fails, still have the issue of growing student enrollment, we'd still have to address it, the board would have to consider next steps. We may need to look at having larger class sizes, using trailers as classrooms. Or using, uh, picking specialists out of their classrooms and have them travel from class to class on their car to teach their class.
So we look at these three areas here, we look at enrollment, we look at taxes and we look at achievement. And you can see enrollment going up while taxes are going down and achievement is going up. And so district is in a great spot right now and that's why we believe that this referendum provides a long term solution. That supports the district growth while keeping taxes stable. So we encourage everyone to vote, part of the democracy, great democracy we live in is the ability to vote on these things. If you are good at a patient to that website, we have a piece that that is that's referendum four, but we appreciate the opportunity to come present. Great relationship with the 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 village, they were tons of years back, those seventeen even with 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 adding the parking lot and tennis court and working that together. Um, we've had a great relationship with them, we appreciate. That's we appreciate the relationship.
Any questions here?
So thank you so much for the presentation, Jeff, I really appreciate it. Um, thinking.
Yes, yeah, this this will be better. So thinking about the planned addition, um, is that to handle the existing grid that you've seen in the last five or six years? Or is there any capacity for that to handle further grid that may occur? We're about to have like forty three finished from Milwaukee up to Grafton. It's going to be a highway that stumps people right here, there's going to be a lot of pressure to build to accommodate people who live up here for many good reasons. For reasons, just curious, how much extra capacity beyond that grid that you showed with the new additions?
So the the that's what we've looked at is looking at those bubble classrooms, we talk about needing more than classes at each, three sections at each grade level. By having three extra classrooms, we currently already have one bubble at each of our buildings. We just met today as a leadership team with our elementary principals and we'll be moving forward with another bubble kindergarten at. Woodview and at first grade at Kennedy. So we're going to have two bubbles in each of those buildings, which is maxing out all of our spaces, flex space at Kennedy will be utilized and a different room would usually have to be utilized for that. So by moving those three sections out of moving fifth grade out, we automatically have three classrooms in each of our areas to be able to support students. Which then, you know, if you're going to have, right, we have we have four, four days, a half day program. So if you're looking at kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, there's five grade levels. And as we look at our enrollment pieces, we don't foresee a a bubble at each grade level, but maybe at every other year or one every three years. And so we believe that's what we see this as being a long term solution to make sure we have room for our current students as well as future growth. Because even though we've seen the village growth with all of the housing permits, it isn't that at each grade level, we're seeing. Uh, the same number of students being added. It seems to be it's missing certain years, um, which is sort of unique. Um, but so we 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 see that as being a very good long term support.
And the bubbles, we do, you're talking about being able to pour bubbles in a school that only goes to fourth grade. So that capacity is really increased and even John Long Middle School, we have flex spaces that can accommodate any bubbles that come up. So that instead of six sections, we could have seven sections of those grades. So that kind of growth can be accomplished.
Very good, thank you, any other question? Okay, just now, I have one one thing here, certainly, uh, I guess if I'm maybe a five percent on on the cost of possible funding. Uh, we're kind of seeing that dollar, um, the the percentage of interest rate kind of drop and we think that it'll continue to drop through. Hopefully, I think twenty twenty four, but that should also affect how much the cost of this over.
Correct, so you saw point nine dollar testament, if we financed it at a lower rate, then that interest cost.
Let's hope for two and a half.
There we go.
Okay, thank you gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it and we will look forward to going to the school board at the next meeting. We can get this meeting done, I'll be over there. Thanks again, we appreciate that. All right, let's go to item B, ordinance amending title two. Um, or title two administrator personnel of village of Grafton, school code as we change board committees, missions code update. So any further discussion by the board? No, no, okay, I would park.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the comment from Paul earlier. I did think you have a clear transparent, uh, well defined process by which residents are able to know about opportunities. And then be able to apply for those, we're striving for a met on being so will be able to address that.
Sure, first thing, uh, you know, I think if we get more folks involved, we are certainly going to be looking at re. For these positions and I think we're going to be doing a lot of social media requests for this. It's not just going to be whoever submits an app. At this point in time, reading your question, um, you know, how do we do this? People submit applications, I review those applications and I do interview people, but I think that's fit for that position based on their background. So there is an interview process that takes place and yours is primarily about recruiting.
Yeah, primarily about making sure that the public knows the opportunities are there. Uh, the Met one people example, as you mentioned, they have their, they're fine there in their town center and they were advertising, we have these specific openings. Get your info into, um, city hall. We're just, uh, addressing the unknown, so I trust the process you've put together. That's we have some great communities to our various force committees, just making sure that a wider population is there.
We will do that, I think the first thing we need to do is we have to look at this, this ordinance gaining. Once this is approved and it's approved, and I think we look forward to the next step, which is recruiting, because there's now. The next. Fourth year, so we will get a full board forward. And really would like to look at the people who, um, are maybe not successful in being able to get into the, um, elected officials. Being able to have those people, if you don't get elected this year, you know, include you in on some of these committees utilizing your skills or best C stat. So we can get you involved in the government process, we saw.
Oh, yeah, I just had two things. Um, Jesse, on page seven, uh, we're talking about board of review. And I did notice on all the other committees, there was an A, B and a C. With C being powers duties and appeals. And it looks like that one section might be missing from board of review.
Yeah, but the the reforming issue, that would be added back in, there should be a powers and duty, correct? That's great catch and yeah, that was a formatting issue, we will add that in.
Sixteen what? Is it draft or what? Very good, thank you.
Um, sixteen where we talked about please inspire commitment and you had mentioned, Dan, about the, uh. The president, the chair of that committee will be appointed by the committee. But that's really not in this language and and then the other thing, I just want to make sure people know. Um, the handbook that they function with right now is called the rules of procedure. It's not technically called a handbook, is what I was told. And the only other thing is I have a hard time finding that on the build website. So possibly we could post that somewhere.
One one, I'll be one, Jesse.
Can do.
Can do. Okay, I think it's all second. Being an officer, wow, I'm sorry.
No. Resilience require offers.
Yeah. Seconded. A little second. Brother, please. They say I'm. I'm a boss. Very, thank you very much.
We go correct.
Yes.
Yes, we're both correct. Okay, let's talk about resolution proposal on Senate Bill six nine one, because I think we've all heard about this, but Jessica, you can take us through a brief overview.
Absolutely, actually, I would like to turn it over to Assistant Administrator Wolf as she brought this pending legislation to my attention. Which quickly rose to the priority level of keeping an eye on. Um, with that, um, following the legal Wisconsin municipalities model, as they are ardently lobbying against this legislation. We are, uh, bringing a resolution forward to the village board for consideration this evening. And with that, I would turn it over to Assistant Administrator Wolf.
So as the staff report mentioned, scribes Senate Bill six nine one would allow, um, towns in Grafton or soothing towns. As in to self designate and as an urban town. There are some, um, definitions and criteria that they would have need to include your population, intensity, law enforcement and, uh, man, land. Ordinances, um, but it's all pretty basic requirements. Staff is concerned about this Senate bill for a few reasons. Primary one is that the the pain, uh. Authority that the bill allows these urban towns is the right to connect city and village utilities. Uh, if if there is sufficient capacity at the time of of application. And so staff feels that this is a is a threat, um, to the village's utility systems and potential, uh, capacity. And could also limit the village's ability to grow in the future if that capacity that is is reduced by providing services to another community. There's also the possibility that this could box in the village, um, with, uh, its town development whereby, you know, we see opportunities to build to grow. Um, and that's second, I just wanted to, lastly, just wanted to point out that the village has invested millions of dollars, um, in tax, there's been invested millions of dollars. In our, uh, water and sewer systems and, um, don't think it's appropriate for other communities to take.
Very good, thank you. Um, as this is a resolution, I need an offer motion and second for discussion, please.
I'll offer.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
If we have an offer motion and second, any discussion, except.
Um, we have an idea what the current population is in this town.
Um, I don't recall off the top of my head, um. If Google serves me well.
Yeah, I recall hearing anything from, I guess, Chairman Bartel or any of the residents of the town that this is something they're really interested in. I don't know if anybody else has.
I think there's a significant amount of discussion, so please. Well, the towns need to. All right, they can move, also, we can said. So it's. Yes, but it's said it's not always asked us for it, but I guess we come within the town seat of mind. They were interested in. Okay, the amount we have invested in this, we take a great deal. Up pretty persistent too. Sir, Jack. If we don't think so. Okay, we're motioning second. They were saying I'm. I'm happy. Posed. Thank you very much. Exit of the donation support the image television to the village board.
Absolutely, in accord with the village policy, donations must be formally approved via formal action by the village board. Uh, that said, as staff began to explore ways, uh, to address the audio visual capabilities within the village boardroom. Um, it was found that, uh, presentation of in squad and body worn camera footage for municipal court proceeding proceedings. Was difficult utilizing the existing projector and dropdown screen. Therefore, it was a request brought to us by, uh, um, village council as well as municipal court, if it would be possible to, um. Obtain a, um, television monitor for purposes of broadcasting that particular footage as it is much more conducive and clear for court purposes. Um, by by fortuitous timing, um, within a day or two, um, unbeknownst to him. Trusty Armstrong came forward and offered a donation of an unused forty eight inch television. Um, that said, this, uh, flat screen television does have the capability of connecting to a laptop computer. For the broadcasting needs that were previously identified, um, to us as a village. Um, that being said, I am, uh, asking for the board's consideration to accept the donation of said forty eight inch, uh, television. Um, but also too, I need to point out, um, staff recommends that trustee Armstrong do abstain from this vote as it is his donation being offered.
Very good. All right, so I'm going to look for a motion and a second to accept the donation of a forty eight.
Motion to approve, I'll second.
Second.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your kind.
All right, take the board would set that donation on favor save. A pose. Six.
That's that, yeah, thank you very much.
All right, can you all hear me out there? All right, good, because we're going to go through a local verbal contract, audio, video, for greater divisionally. Needed. Edition cable micro, three hundred fifty dollars in the village boardroom at a cost of three hundred seventy dollars. Jesse, tell us what we can do to upgrade this horrible system.
Absolutely, with pleasure. Um, actually, I need to give credit to, um, Assistant Administrator Wolf, um, for taking the lead and doing the due diligence. Um, her and her staff, um, really put together a nice, um, I F C that breaks down, uh, the bids that were received. And, um, the, um, amenities that we are considering for the village boardroom. So to break down the proposal as far as the new audio visual system, all of the boom mites in front of at the dais in front of, uh, the the individual city here would be replaced. The portable handheld microphones would be replaced and one would be established for public speaking purposes. There would be a camera placed on the far wall facing the dais to capture all of the board's, uh, proceedings. There would be a camera behind the board capturing the crowd to, um, uh, document their, uh, participation in the meeting as well. Um, the, uh, support equipment would also be, um, updated with that system. The recording capability would be maintained as we would be still utilizing Zoom. However, the meeting owl would go away and we would utilize those wall mounted cameras. Um, that said, um. This is being brought forward and, uh, recommended use of ARPA dollars that we believe will be, uh, that we are on track to have on hand. As projects get wrapped up here during the course of two thousand twenty four. So taking a look back at the two thousand twenty three projects that were approved. Um, overall costs of the approved or the, uh, estimated costs of the approved two thousand twenty three projects was about nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Between the kitchen remodel at the fire department being removed from consideration. The police department locker room repairs and upgrades project being downsized. The LED light changeover project being removed. as well as um other projects such as the village hall phone system and the um utility SCADA upgrades coming in at or below budget. Um, we are on track with the identified twenty twenty-four projects being Veterans Park Pavilion, Police Department Locker Room Repairs Downsized, as you recall, and the Lime Kiln Park Paving uh Project. With all of that in consideration, we are looking at about fifty-four thousand dollars um remaining. So with that, um, we took a keen eye to the um proposals that were submitted. As you'll note, in the IFC, actually, there were um different scopes um provided, one being a scope. Uh, all of the um companies, the three bids that were received actually provided two scopes of service, one scope of service that addressed the village boardroom proper, the secondary scope of service that would actually carry over and provide um updates to the audiovisual um capacity within the committee room. Um, that being said, because we want to ensure um that we don't run right up on the uh capacity of our ARPA funds, um, we are focusing in what is being presented by staff is a focus on the village boardroom as that is the clear priority. I believe the committee room can be followed up on in the future, whether it be remaining ARPA funds or through capital project budgeting. Um, that being said, um, we are recommending a contract with Apex Audio, um, audio video for the replacement and upgrade of the equipment and one additional table microphone for a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Very good. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to accept. To approve contract with Apex Audio. Upgrade of the. Thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, seventy-eight cents, and one additional table microphone, three hundred and fifty dollars village boardroom for cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
The motion and second. Um, okay, let's go discussions here. Questions?
Um, does he any idea how long um it might take for the switch over? Did you get any? Any ideas from the companies?
Uh, I would have to defer to Jessica. I did not get a project timetable. Okay. We we would actually, if we get approval, we would look to exercise the contract this week and and set forth a project uh timeline to get this uh handled as soon as possible because of the ongoing difficulties here in the boardroom.
Um, possibly. And additional stack and cost of going out and getting efficient quotes for doing that project in the future. So I think it'd be interesting just getting it done with the funding that we have available.
Great.
Have a warranty and all this stuff and going to come in.
There there would be a level of support provided by the vendors and it would be nice in that we actually have the vendor on file. Um, right now, the individual who um implemented all of this equipment here, we actually have no contact with them, haven't had for years. So we have no support right now. Um, so with that, um, there would be kind of the factory warranties that come with the stuff, if you will. Um, I I don't mean to downplay it, but there would be the standard um warranties that come with items. Um, that said, we can absolutely ask the the um companies if there are extended warranty options, but at the very least, we would have a point of contact for um maintenance issues because it would be the actual installer. We actually don't have that luxury right now. Absolutely. Four hundred thousand dollars. Yes, sir.
They. Here, if anybody wants to go for a change in motion. Or um to include both of them, it'd be a cost of forty-seven thousand dollars.
Is that the total of that?
Yeah, I I just, you know, I want to get consensus here and then I can go.
I would agree to the change.
Agree to the change.
Um, I'm gonna stick with the original.
Original, I agree to the change, okay?
I agree with the change.
I agree.
I agree with the change.
Okay, so um it doesn't matter what I say because there's consensus. So let us, I know I support that too. So um let's go, let's look. The motion here. Raise the motion. And that I believe the cost for both of each board committee room uh would be forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-four cents.
Is there a pending motion?
There is a pending motion. Um, we, yeah, we would need a revision. Um, the, yes, the um bid summary to include um all of the 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 village boardroom and the committee room for Apex Audio Visual is forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. That is the complete package, if you will.
Thank you. So I will look into the whole. Is the motion and second.
Trusty Miller. Second.
If you'd be willing to withdraw your motion.
Yes.
Would you be willing to withdraw your? Okay, so the motion is withdrawn. We're good with that? Okay, so I'll look for a motion to approve a contract with Apex Audio. The replacement and creative. Equipment, which will include the committee room and an additional table microphone for a cost not to exceed forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Some need a motion? I got a motion. Second, okay, we've got a motion and second. Discussion. What favor say? Hi? Very, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Right. Let's go to um the our report of the transmission resolution. Just to be taking that.
Yes.
Okay. Jessica. Off you go.
Days, five days for some apartments. Five lots should be interested access pride for the one of the. Cool with um. Uh, connecting on the.
Very good. I'll need a um. So resolution, we'll need an offer motion and second. Offer from Lisa.
I'll second it.
The offer, any discussion? All right, there, all in favor say aye. Magnate. Close. Very, thank you very much. All right, so you have a.
Uh, yes, a request was made uh to review whether or not online participation by a board or committee member um should be permissible. Um, therefore, uh was placed on tonight's agenda for uh discussion, uh possible direction to staff if there is a consensus um uh by the board. Uh, that said, um, many municipalities have retained the ability to participate electronically via an online platform such as Zoom, Microsoft Teams, Google Meet, et cetera. Grafton has also retained this ability um to access our public meetings via Zoom, subject to a timely request. That is um our big guideline, if you will, that a timely request for online participation be made. Um, taking a look at our neighbors, um, oh, excuse me, let me back up. Um, to date, board members have been able to participate in closed session online with staff simply stopping the recording of the uh meeting and documenting um any action out of closed session uh with the posting of the video online. Um, taking a look at how our neighbors handle um participation in closed session via online platform. Um, Cedarburg does allow online participation in closed session via a separate meeting link. So uh Mr. Maroder is uh uh participating tonight in the meeting or attending the meeting, if you will, via a Zoom link. Um, using Cedarburg's and Stockville's system, this meeting would be shut down and a separate link would be sent if Mr. Maroder were to participate in a closed session with the village board, two separate and distinct meeting links. Um, Mequon, on the other hand, um went the route of codifying a uh electronic participation ordinance. They do not allow online participation in closed session by officials per their code, um which is attached. Furthermore, their code places limits on general online participation by board committee members um in that ordinance as well. Um, I did, I did attach a printout from the city of Mequon uh website outlining those code provisions. So there are different ways to approach this. Um, that said, I see uh both sides of the coin with this matter as an administrator to you, the policymakers. I see the need for the ability to be able to participate remotely. Um, that said, I also see and understand the um, you know, security concerns of you're not sure who else is in the room, camera off, um, what have you, if there is sensitive information being discussed. Um, so that said, seeing both sides of it, I ha- do not have a recommendation at this point. This is for information only if there is a uh uh consensus or direction from the village board. Happy to look into that.
Thank you. Let me answer this question. So I'm taking full session. So I have seen that available. Be available. There may be. Full session. So she. Theory. I've got my wife listening to full session. Much less the people through the very thin walls might be able to hear what I'm talking about, stuff that we really care about in Florida. Do we have a problem for violation of full session, given the fact that can't guarantee that I'm really secure?
Yeah, those are all the issues. I mean, that's that's about it. Those are the issues that really it's intended for the closed session participants only. Um, and I think that your administrator kind of summed it up the best. You're it's sort of a weighing of the balances of sometimes you need, you literally need to make a quorum and you you want someone to call in from Florida on the trip as as much of a pain in the neck as that could be. But you really like, you you kind of turn, I think you turn to your trustees, you know, to each of you to do your best to maintain the confidentiality. If you have to go into another room with your phone and and zoom in. But I get it. Here, if you're, if you're, if you're into the wire, uh, the wifi of the hotel may not be super secure.
Okay.
But I I think if you're, if you're trying, you know, you're taking reasonable steps to try to be as secure as possible.
Okay. Thank you very much. So just a general consensus, do we want to do something about this and give uh give administrative the opportunity to look into establishing policy? Because this side has spoken so much to me, we started this side. The consensus, Dave?
You want comments or?
Anything, comments or?
Well, I mean, we were put in this position as a position of thrust. And I believe that when we're in a closed session, I think we have to have a little bit of integrity when we're there and it would expect. I mean, I would expect you know, the rest of the the board here to adhere to those rules and be by themselves. And and accept that 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 is what is happening out there. Um, so.
You're okay with the way we have it right now?
I think so.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, too. I I believe that everybody uses good judgment when they're. And I don't think it's gonna be.
Very good.
I'm fine with the way it is. I trust everybody up there.
Amy.
See us have a policy just.
Mark. I'm content with the policy that is more or less what we have in place now. Oh, there was a meeting back in Air June that I had to attend totally, and we had a closed session item. Well, asked if I was alone, I was out on porch at the time, so yes, I was. So having a policy as Trusty Love mentions to protect ourselves that more or less codifies what we have in place now. Um.
Lisa?
Yeah, I I would agree also to have a formal policy on the books. I think it just protects us and I think we all would would, you know, common sense be in a room with nobody else, where it's quiet. Um, you know, internet, secure internet. So I mean, I trust that we'll all do that.
That's all good. I. So. Data trust or full session or? What's the practice that we have, Katie?
Uh, currently I email the full session material. Currently, I email the full session material. To just the village board and we could have a session.
Okay.
That's what I would continue to do.
This this could be not really a change in anything. But I think that's the direction you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you all. Great. Let's go to the next one here. We have department officers report. Just say.
Yes, I would actually, uh, please bear with me. Um, I had this all queued up but had to facilitate a slideshow. Um, that said, I would like to load up.
Jesse, would you like to go to operators licenses?
Actually, that'd be great. Um, there are no concerns from staff as the IFC um calls out.
Very good. I got a couple of operators license here. You're all okay with us just for a second. We have operators licenses here.
I'll second.
The motion and second. Um, favor say aye.
That was absolutely perfect as if we choreographed that. Um, yep, I I I want to uh put this out there and let you know that Chief Rice are and I are internet famous. Um, this is actually the informational video that um Miller Communications facilitated on behalf of the Fire and EMS referendum. Um, it is meant as um really an advertising piece to speak to or an educational piece, rather, to speak to um certain uh statistics that are very um uh paramount with the consideration of the uh um referendum request for um funding for additional staffing and then ultimately leading to a consolidation. Uh, with that, um, I want to, as my report this evening, provide this video for the village board. And of course. Nope.
This then pretty soon allow Grafton and Sockville, the bill will be a system it needs by covering the cost of thirteen additional full-time staff and formally create a joint Grafton-Sockville fire company by effectively working to the medical, rescue, and fire emergency services for the Grafton and Sockville community. Make wondering why now. All sorts of service continued to increase significantly for Grafton and Sockville, up eighty-six percent and fifty-three percent expected since two thousand fifteen, while available number of emergency responders continued to increase. Current funding levels and staffing model are insufficient to meet this growing need. In addition, ARPA funds currently being used to fund full-time positions and offset some operating costs will run out in two thousand twenty-five, further challenging both unions. Being this growing, our communities have identified that to hire thirteen additional full-time staff include response times and emergency response to live. Additional full-time staff would enable the proposed Grafton-Sockville fire department current and future for emergency services. If the referendum passes, Grafton station will be able to immediately respond to shoot simultaneous calls for emergency service and the Sockville station will be able to respond to blood call for service twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days. Additionally, Grafton Fire Department will be able to be needed to respond at all for service. Sockville staff will be less dependent on paid-on-call staff improving response times. If the referendum fails, the property tax levy will not be and the level of service provided by Grafton and Sockville Fire Department will continue to be strained due to increasing calls for service and a continued decline in availability of lost staff. It's take time to learn more.
Take time to learn more and make informed decision about the future of Fire and EMS service accounting needs. Learn more and make planning vote by visiting the building Grafton.
Thank you. Um, so yes, that was um an interesting exercise, say the least. Um. I uh Chief Rice and I um. Did quite well. It it took a couple of takes, but you know what? It it turned out to be a great end product and an excellent um video. That video is currently posted on our referendum informational page. Um, unfortunately, being a year of an election, uh presidential election, Facebook has really locked down and tightened up their. Um, policies and procedures regarding campaign media being posted to their platform. Thankfully, Miller Communication is actually going to bat for us and working through the red tape with uh Facebook. In order for us to hopefully be able to get this video posted directly to Facebook. Right now. We can simply direct people to the referendum webpage to view the video. We cannot post the video directly to. Um, the villages or the towns or or who um whomever's uh Facebook page. So um. That said, we're hoping to get that capability soon, but in the meantime, it is available on our referendum website.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Uh, that is all I have for this evening.
I. Referendum public meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Twenty seventh March, and that will be on. Also included on the second mailing that goes out, so.
Correct.
Specifically did it the night that the school district is. We also, my teachers also have some presentations coming. Back on senior uh living. Science full programs and. Point and then waiting here back when. Current, do one at the senior center, so we'll just keep it for people, so. Yeah, thank you for that only you can take it.
Absolutely.
Yep.
The additional um presentation at the at the Legion?
It is. Representatives. At there.
Okay.
The back will be better to burn them.
Okay.
So we'll see what we can do. No, there is nothing. Go ahead.
Uh, Jesse. I'm sure all of us got a mailing from. This uh. Like that. I got my mailing on March first.
Yes, um.
And there is a meeting on February twenty ninth.
Yes, the uh um. Sure. No, um, it was a bulk mailing issue. Um, Miller Communication got it to the printer and put it out with the post office and bulk mailing unfortunately is not a priority for the United States Postal Service. So that is the issue there. That said, we are aware that it happened as well out in the township. Um, as I received mine on the same day out in the township. And we are making sure to back up the um date it gets sent to the post office in a bulk mail form to ensure it gets out in a more timely manner.
Yeah. All. Bring the post office. Great deal down.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, right, let's go on to your four bills. For. Spending just here of the finger sixteen thousand one hundred seventy dollars thirty five cents. Second.
A motion to approve.
I'll second it.
See uh communication uh from Jesse from trustees on specific items. Else that can be discussed or pick up over here. We not dizzy. Big. Motion in second, favor say aye. Close. Motion, very, so we'll put the motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion in second, favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. There is. Yes.